Yeah.
Hello, everybody. Um, sound works, I think. Hello, everybody. Thank you for being here this evening.
Now, everybody's quiet.
And there are seats up front if anybody wants to be. Pete's right there. Pete's sitting there. He's a lot of fun. Okay. Welcome to the Longmont Area Democrat City Councilor Candidate Forum. My name is Marissa and I do the media and comms for LAD. We'll be back here next month on a Thursday, October 9th, where we will hear from the mayor and St. Vrain Valley School District candidates. But tonight, we've got all six of the Longmont City Council at-large candidates, six candidates running for two at-large seats. And we've got the three candidates running for the Ward Two seat, including the incumbent running for the Ward Two, uh, who serves Ward Two right now. A way to frame this, so it's always on your radar, is that city council elections are in odd-numbered years here in Longmont. And this year, wards one and three are not on the ballot. However, everyone in Longmont will get a ballot for November 4th because the mayor and two at-large seats are on the ballot. Ward Two residents in Longmont will also have the Ward Two seats on their ballot. Any additional election info? You can find at our website, longmontdems.org, under the 2025 election widget. I'd like to thank Sergio and Akbar from Longmont Public Media. They were here hours ago, setting up for the sound and recording for this very important event tonight. Thank you, Sergio and Akbar. Candidates, um, thank you for being here, for showing up tonight. We, we love having you here. Thanks for stepping up. You heard from Virginia, our president, several times with calls and emails about all of you presenting tonight. Thank you, Virginia, for all the work you put into, to, leading up to tonight. Thank you. Thank you, Ingrid, LAD's Vice President, along with our board, for fielding the enormous amount of questions submitted by Longmont residents. We've put on many forums, but never with the amount of questions submitted that we received. That is why, due to the sheer amount of candidates, nine, this evening alone, and our strict adherence to the 150 minutes we have to work with, we were unable to include all the questions, especially several of the questions that have been submitted in the last two days or so. Our sincere apologies. However, that is also why I created this handy info sheet that you saw on your seats, full of helpful information, not only about the election and helping and finding out what ward you live in, but all the candidates' websites, so that you can contact all of them yourself to ask any questions that were not asked this evening. I'd also encourage you to share what you learned from candidates' answers with friends and family that are interested in this election. And hear me on this. Let me assure you that for all the issues you do care about, LAD, Longmont Area Democrats, is here to help facilitate education, awareness, and action, whether it is showing up at public invited-to-be-heard every Tuesday night, you know, after city council meetings, or creating advocacy groups and engaging, engaging grassroots volunteers, facilitating town halls. In other words, do the work, okay? So for instance, to move forward on the issues that you, that you care about. Next, and speaking of keeping on track, many thanks to Annie Colvin, who will be our timekeeper this evening. Candidates, make sure you've got a sightline to Annie. Raise your hand, Annie. When giving your remarks, she'll let you know when you're close to your limit. She doesn't have a hook, but, you know. She, if anybody's got one, no, anyway. And to the rest of our board members, Beth, Julie Stan, Sue, Amy, Marilyn, Marilyn, who started the whole thing, thank you. Even, even with busy lives and families, the hours you devote to this, sometimes crazy pursuit of ours not only provides powerful support, it's inspiring too. So thank you. Now, to the audience, thank you. Thank you, thank you for being here, participating in our democracy at the local level. Looks like we're, we're almost a full house. Now, this is where I must ask you respectfully, fully understanding the passion of a politically active crowd, to curb your enthusiasm, keep outbursts under your breath if you can, interruptions only take up more time and we must stay on task. Thank you. Finally, but just as importantly, thank you to Nicolette, to Saint, for being our moderator this evening. Nicolette is a retired reporter, columnist, and magazine editor, a native Coloradan. She is a journalism graduate of the University of Colorado in Boulder. She spent her working career in various communication jobs in Chicago and San Francisco, moving back home to Colorado in 2010. She lived in Carmadale, near Aspen, until 2022, when health concerns prompted her to move to Longmont. So, welcome, welcome. While well-versed in Colorado politics, she's a relative newcomer to Longmont and Boulder County. So, welcome, Nicolette. And it is now your turn to take it away. Thank you so much.
And, um, as you can see, I'm not very tall and we have a flat room, so I am modeling what I would like to ask the candidates. When you are speaking, stand up so the people in the back can see you, even if you're taller than me, which you probably all are. We intend to offer candidates the opportunity to speak freely for three minutes in opening and closing remarks. We do have a person at the side table who will do her best to let you know when your time is running out. You'll see the yellow 30-second sign. And if you are still talking when your three minutes are up, she will hold up a red stop sign. At that time, you need to finish your sentence, so everybody has an equal time to, to speak. And if I have to interrupt somebody, please accept my apologies in advance. It could come to that. When it comes time for the Q and A, each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer each question. Again, our timekeeper will lift up the 30-second warning sign and then a red stop sign. Audience members, are we inviting people to write on cards? Or do we have too many, will you pass those out? Okay. We do invite you to put your questions on cards. We will gather them and do our best to organize them according to subject matter. And then I will alternate the questions submitted online with audience questions from here tonight. We will do our best to ask as many questions as we can in the time that we have tonight. We do have a full schedule, so we ask that you stick to it as much as possible. And, uh, audience, please refrain from responding to the candidates because applause or, um, follow-up takes more time and will get off of our schedule. We are trying to keep things running on time. Some of the candidates have left literature in the tape, on the tables outside the door here. Please feel free to take it. And, um, the flyer that was on your chairs also has contact information. So, if you have a question that doesn't get answered, do go ahead and follow up with the candidates. I'm going to call everybody for opening statements. And we'll go with Ward Two first and then the at-large seats. And we'll just go in alphabetical order by last name. So, Matthew, you're up first.
Good evening. Let's try that again. Good evening. Longmont families, residents, and businesses are facing unprecedented challenges right now. Even the city is facing unprecedented challenges right now. We are facing unprecedented environmental, social, housing, and economic uncertainty right now because of federal government chaos, because of state budget limitations and cuts just in the last couple of weeks, and because of macroeconomic uncertainty. I'm running for city council because I want Longmont to thrive despite these challenges and to still be an effective local government despite these challenges. That means proactively, not reactively, managing how and where we grow. That means not letting development happen to us, but taking control of our growth future. That means we have transit that's safe and convenient, not scraps from RTD. And it means we embrace the Sundance Film Festival, not let it trample us. The first time I was driving through Longmont with my wife, I looked over at the Longmont Sugar Mill and said, ew, that's disgusting. And, one day, that's going to be the coolest place on the Front Range. It's going to be the eastern gateway of Longmont. And it's the place where we can stomach the most amount of growth in our community, support our local businesses, increase our housing, and utilize the existing trails and infrastructure that we've already invested in. I'm running for my first full term on city council to prioritize managing how and where we grow, increasing affordability by managing costs here locally within our control, and preparing for a sustainable, resilient future. My wife and I chose to build our life here and we know how hard it is to shift from rental housing to owning our house. We made that jump a few years ago. It was not easy. And we know many others are struggling with that. We became part of the community by showing up, reaching out, doing a little bit of singing along the way, and actively contributing when welcome. On the Planning and Zoning Commission, I showed up. Residents knew I did my homework because I was citing their emails by name for certain controversial developments. They knew that I was working and they could see firsthand the negotiations with developers over more crosswalks, more pedestrian access, more green infrastructure. And we only get one chance for each of the development properties that's proposed, one chance to get it right. Before I was appointed to city council, I met with residents. I was asked to meet with residents on certain, on a certain housing project. I showed up because government should be responsive. Government should be effective and forward-looking, and government should be a force for innovation. In fact, this is my day job. I help cities navigate public safety, environmental, uh, energy, transportation challenges. So, let me tell you who I am. I am the city nerd who shows up. I am the city nerd who responds and has spent three years getting involved in the community, getting things done, like reopening our Greenway Trail and expanding open space. That's real progress and real change. Thank you.
Okay, let's see if this works okay. Welcome and thank you all for coming tonight. I really appreciate that you took the time to be here. You're going to hear a lot about my positions, um, as we are questioned here. So, I thought I'd take this time to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm Teresa Simkins. And I was born and raised in and around Washington, DC. I went to Penn State University and got a degree in advertising communications and studied abroad and then lived abroad for a while. I came back and attended law school at Georgetown. And, um, then after that, we moved to Boulder County in 1997. And I moved to Longmont in 2013. I have seven children that call me mom, two that I gave birth to, three that are step, and two that are foster. I spent about 25 years being a public service at all levels of government. I started on Capitol Hill as an advocate for the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, excuse me. And then when we moved out here, I joined the National Conference of State Legislatures, where I worked with state legislators all over the country on issues of children and family law policy. Then I became a Boulder County attorney and I handled child protection cases and adult protection cases. I was a town clerk in Netherland. And then I came to Longmont, where I spent seven and a half years working for the city of Longmont on the communications team. And that gave me a good insight into a whole lot of the city. I worked in multiple departments and with a lot of the staff. And I went to Wet Smith and did that for another year before I joined the dark side of corporate America to pay for all that college that my kids have to go to. So, what does it mean when I say I was a public servant? It means, first and foremost, that I believe in representative government. I believe that public service is a noble way to spend your time. I was raised to believe that contributing to your community is a good use of your life. And I come to it without any personal or political agenda. I'm purely here to serve the needs of Ward Two. And I think part of what that means is that you have to really spend a ton of time listening and understanding what your ward wants. And I think that you need to be respectful and bipartisan in how you represent people. What I'm offering to Ward Two is experienced leadership that focuses on coordinated growth in our city and works to preserve the spirit of Longmont. And hopefully, I'll have more time to get into that later. It is a pivotal election, as Matthew said. So, if, uh, if I'm on city council, I will be there to serve as your voice on your council. Thank you.
Hello, I am Meg Thornberry. I use she and they pronouns and I am running for Ward Two. I wanted to also just introduce myself a little bit more. I grew up in Niwot and I went to Sunset Middle School, so I have some history with Longmont, although I lived on the periphery. And then I worked in Longmont starting in 2017. After I got my degree in Ohio, I ran back to Colorado as soon as I could. And then I went out to Pittsburgh to get my master's in social work and then also ran back here as fast as I could. And I have been working at Kid Stuff Counseling for the last three years. And I have been working primarily with youth on Medicaid. And so I have seen a lot of areas where I think we could really be supporting our most vulnerable better. So, with that, um, I am running for our youth. I want to make sure that we are building communities. And honestly, I think that local resistance is going to be our best hope for the future because individuals die, but communities survive. And I want to make sure that Longmont is not just surviving, but is thriving and is thriving for everyone. So, I want Longmont to be accessible. I want Longmont to be inclusive. Want to make sure that everybody has their voice heard. And as a therapist, I'm kind of a professional listener, so I do feel qualified for that. That being said, I think it is important to have sort of an outsider perspective here, where, uh, you know, there's always more to learn. And I think it's important to have somebody who is bringing in on-the-ground knowledge from a different field to again see how much that we can be doing to advocate for people. I believe in advocating for workers and making sure that we are doing our best to support the lowest-income people among us, along with all other marginalized, um, communities. So, I want to make sure that we are focused on that. And then my, uh, last point that I think is really important is ranked choice voting, which I'm sure John is going to talk more about. But this is a fantastic turnout and this is what democracy looks like, is when we are able to have more than two people talking about issues. And I hate binaries and so I think we need to be moving beyond that. So, I am pushing for ranked choice voting so that we can have elections where we are able to hear from everybody, to have a variety of viewpoints that are represented, and then be able to support the people who we truly believe in and not just make strategic moves. So, I am excited to be here. Thank you all again for coming. And I look forward to the rest of tonight. Thank you.
We will now hear from the, uh, at-large candidates. There are two open seats at large.
Good evening. My name is Steve Altshuler. Obviously, the big question tonight is, why do I want to run for city council? There's an old expression that goes something like this. If not me, who? If not now, when? I moved to Longmont over 18 years ago. Longmont was a thriving, friendly bedroom community. We had open spaces, biking and walking trails, and several new high-ranking schools from kindergarten to grade 12. We also had a mall that had every kind of store or shop you could want, including clothing for kids and adults, furniture, jewelry, kitchen items, sporting goods, and more. We had views of the mountains, minimal traffic, minimal crime, and no homelessness. Fast forward to about 2018, the mall is gone and replaced with mostly restaurants and a movie theater. Traffic, crime, and homelessness are starting to get a lot more noticeable. The schools are getting overcrowded and the education is dropping. From 2019 to 2025, the population in Longmont grew about 2%. Yet the city budget increased by over 22%. A 2022 survey by our own city council showed that the three biggest concerns from Longmont citizens were traffic, crime, and homelessness. Yet in the three years since then, all the city has done is to build hundreds, if not several thousand more rental units, most of which are owned by the city. Traffic, crime, and homelessness have increased dramatically. And now the city wants to remove the four-story height limits and allow seven, 10, and even 14-story buildings. The city has taken open space, changed the zoning, and then allowed construction in areas that there should have never been any buildings. There's a reason for zoning laws and we need to quit having city council make exceptions whenever they want. Several years ago, when the city was looking at installing smart meters, hundreds of concerned and knowledgeable citizens spoke up against the meters. The council didn't slow down, didn't do a small test area, and didn't listen to our citizens. Now, we have hundreds of citizens complaining about the effects of EMFs that the smart meters produce, and nobody is doing anything to help. We have over 300 vacant rental properties with a few thousand more already approved. We have single-family homes that are not selling. Our country is at a zero-population growth rate. We do not need more construction right now. What we do need is to stimulate our existing businesses, a reduction in business fees, regulations, and less oversight by city officials. We have plenty of laws to abide by. We need to quit strangling our small businesses with extra agencies. Did that go up? Wow, I'm really late. I'm sorry. Earlier this year, there was a huge uproar about a house in North Longmont that was housing five, six, seven, and eight sexual predators. I'll cut this short. I'm totally against that. Last year, in my opinion, we experienced the most blatant... Oh, my gosh. I'm so sorry.
Good evening and thank you to the organizers, the moderator, everybody here, and everybody watching at home. Thanks for the opportunity to be here and to be a part of tonight's discussion. I'm Alex Calcoffer and I'm running for city council at large. A little bit about me. Longmont has been home since 2008. My wife and I chose to set roots here and we wanted to raise our two young kids who are here in the audience. Thank you. They were born right here in Longmont. I've worked in logistics for 15 years and I currently serve as the Global Logistics Director for Teladoc Health. For the community, I'm the Chair of the Transportation Board and I'm also Chair of the Community Action for Boulder County. I'm also on the Board of Trustees at the Longmont Alps Lodge. I lead by listening first, setting clear goals, measuring results, keeping people informed about the progress. That is the approach that I will take to city council. I recognize that the city has many priorities and I'm committing to addressing those as well. My campaign, I have three things that I'm focused on. Improving transportation, supporting local businesses, and increasing housing attainability. First on transportation. We need transportation that works for everybody. We need to make it easier and safer to get around town. We need to calm speeding on neighborhood roads. We need to make sure that there's more than one reliable way to get around town, whether it's driving, taking transit, walking, or biking. I will also work with our regional partners to get routes that we demand and get more, uh, more frequent services. Access to reliable transit shouldn't depend on where you live. Second, stronger small businesses. Owners have been telling me that they need predictable timelines and help navigating the permit process. I will set up a business liaison so businesses have one point of contact so they're not bouncing around the city for different departments. I will pair that with streamlined business fees and small projects and better training pipelines so local talent, like the folks who are going to school here, can fill our jobs that are in our community. Third on housing. I want the people who work here to be able to afford to live here and buy the things that they want to buy. We can do that by adding missing middle, like duplexes, townhouses, and small housing projects, especially near transit corridors and services. Neighborhood character is protected by creating attainable options. The goal is simple. The people who power Longmont should be able to make Longmont home. And here's how I will deliver. We will start with pilot programs, measure what matters, evaluate them transparently, and scale what works. We will communicate clearly with timelines, milestones, and results that people can actually track. That is how I will lead. What sets me apart is I show up, I listen, and I act on what I hear. I ask the community how policy lands in real life and I bring that back with practical solutions and I move from idea to reality. Longmont succeeds when we shape our future together and keep our commitment. That is how we build a strong Longmont for all. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is John Lemke. I'm thrilled to be here to present, uh, my ideas to all of you. There are many people in the community that need help and I'm passionate, driven, and straightforward in what I think that we should do. I love this city. I live in a town home. I bike my daughters to school every day. And our neighborhood has a dinner together every week. It's really quite a wonderful experience. I have a bachelor's and master's degree in mechanical engineering. I have a master's. I have a master's degree in engineering management, which is a business degree for engineers, and I studied economics. I decided to run to improve the way that our democracy runs. The at-large election that we have is the most discriminatory type of voting that exists. It's illegal in all federal and state elections because it's so discriminatory, much worse than the gerrymandering that's happening on the federal level. The winning thresholds this fall for each seat, Ward Two, it's 34%, Mayor, it's 26%, and to win at-large, the minimum winning threshold is 20% of the vote. I hear the concern that people have about being heard. And the problem is that if you can win with 20%, it means that you only need to get a cohesive minority to win and ignore everybody else, and 20% is not representative of the city. All right, now I have a question for the audience, and please raise your hand. How many of you are rent burdened? You spend more than 30% of your income on either rent or your mortgage. So in the city, it's 33% of the population, 14,000 households out of our 42,000. So we are not a very representative group here, because 33% of you didn't raise your Our time is shorter than I thought it was, so I'm gonna have to skip a few things. Competence and character, these are the two characteristics that I think are the most important for who we elect. I think that character is the most important. There was people, when I asked them to sign my petition, would ask me to commit to things that I didn't believe in, and I told them I would not commit to that, and they refused to sign my petition because that's what I committed to myself, is that I would be honest and open with everybody. When it comes to competence, I've worked in eight different industries: construction, oil and gas, mining, power generation, lighting, tech, robotics, and aerospace. It'll be very difficult for somebody to come... It's very short. Come up and deceive me with, you know, presenting something that I could not see through in quite a few different areas. So let's talk about my positions. I will prioritize safety over vehicle speed on our streets, legalize more types of housing. It's very difficult or illegal to build anything but a single-family home or a giant apartment complex, and vote to put ranked choice voting on the ballot.
Well, thanks, John, and thank you... Ooh, hello. See, I'm loud. That's my teacher voice. Thank you so much to Nicolette. Thank you to all of the candidates up here. Thanks to the Longmont Area Democrats for organizing this event. As someone who was a member of this organization several times throughout my life, it's a little trippy to be up on this side of the dais instead of out there with all of you. And thank you for coming. My name is Jake Marsing. I am a husband, I'm an educator, I'm a dad to a two-and-a-half-year-old and a one-year-old, so if I look tired, it's because I am. And I am running for city council at large because I believe that this community, this place that I love, this city that my family has been lucky enough to call home for four, going on five generations now, is at a real crossroads moment. I believe that we can choose one of three paths, and that this is going to be the election that decides what path we go down. We can become a community of the wealthy and the well-established, folks that got in early, made it here, put down roots, and succeeded. And we would tell everybody else that they pound sand, right? That's the first path. We can become a transient community, right? A transitional community of folks that come in for a little while, put down some kind of life, and then go eventually put down roots somewhere else. That's the kind of community where the gap between haves and have-nots increases dramatically. But I believe, and I'm running because I believe we can choose a third path. We can create a Longmont for everybody. We can create a community where working people, nurses, teachers, working-class, blue-collar folks are able to buy a home, afford to send their kids to a quality daycare, and eventually establish some kind of roots in our community. To make that Longmont for everybody possible, I really believe that there are three core issues that we have to attack, three barriers that working families in our community are facing. The first is the cost of housing and housing affordability. We gotta make sure that working families here can afford to buy homes here. We gotta increase the amount of affordable housing stock that is for-sale units. We gotta make sure that we stop corporate corporations from coming in and buying up our neighborhoods. And we have to make sure that we cut red tape for the developers who want to work with the city in good faith to promote good projects. We have to make sure, too, that we address the cost of childcare and early childhood education. Childcare is a crisis facing working families in our community, and if we are not able to lower costs in that space, we're gonna fundamentally change who we are five, 10, 15 years from now. I'm looking forward to talking more tonight about some of the more specific policy goals, but I'm proud to be running. I'm proud that leaders in this community trust me to do this job. I'm proud to have the support of folks like Joe Nagus, our legislative delegation. Just this last week was endorsed by the St. Brain Valley Education Association. They trust me to do the job, and I hope you will too. Thanks so much.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Crystal Freito. Disclaimer, I'm getting over a little bit of a cold, so if you hear me a little bit raspy or slurring my words, I blame the Benadryl. So yeah, so just a little bit about me. I was born and raised here in Longmont, Colorado, and I actually went to school right down the street at Old Columbine High School, which is now known as New Meridian, and it's an alternative school. Shortly after graduating, or being the first in my family to graduate Old Columbine, I came and studied criminal justice, actually, right here in this very building. And this is where I actually took my first Chicano Studies class. And I was thinking about it today, when I was thinking about what I was gonna say, and I was remembering this Chicano Studies class and how much it inspired me, and really caused a flame to light within me to create change. Not only that, it also taught me that change can come from anybody, no matter how you look, where you're from, and what background you come from, that you have the potential to make a difference in your society and your community. And so the fact that it's full circle and I'm back in this space today, it speaks volumes to me, so this is a really special moment. So after I studied criminal justice here at Front Range Community College, I later went on to study human services at Metro State University and eventually graduated with my bachelor's in human services with a concentration of high-risk youth studies. It was throughout this time that I was going to school part-time that I began to really work within my community, because I knew at an early age I wanted to give back. And so during this time, I spent time working in different areas of our community and the different community systems, like our nonprofit agencies, our local government within the county and the city, and I also spent a lot of time within our school district. And this is where I really started to develop a comprehensive system perspective. And it really allowed me to look at all the different systems and how they work together, and how they could better work together to serve everyday people like you and I. A lot of people ask me why I'm running. And my answer to that question is because I grew tired of serving thousands and thousands of families over the last decade and only being able to put a Band-Aid on the issue. Today, I tell people all the time, it's almost as if all these families I sat with through their hardships and listening to the challenging times, that their stories paved the path for me to come and serve on the council. And my ask of you today is that you don't send me back to these families not being able to make a change. I have a sign-up sheet outside for you guys. Please take a look at it. Thanks.
My name is Regan Sage. I'm running for a council member at large because I love this city. I love the mountains. I love the people here. I love our businesses downtown. I love all of the green space here, and I love the resources that we have in Longmont. I love Longmont Public Media, our Next Light Internet, Ride Longmont. These are the products of a forward-looking city. I grew up in a suburb of Chicago in a quaint community dotted with farmland. Today, all that green space has been replaced with strip malls, housing developments, and traffic-choked streets. It's become just another suburb. It's lost all of its charm. I'm running because I do not want Longmont to become that. We can't freeze Longmont the way it is or turn back time. Nothing stays the same. The only option is moving forward while preserving what is important to us. For the past six years, I've been privileged to be a stay-at-home mother of two amazing boys. But before that, I was in operations and marketing for a global clothing brand. I have a BFA in theater, so I understand the give and take of true collaboration. I also have an MBA in management science, so I'm fluent in spreadsheets. I understand how to effectively manage budgets, and I'm comfortable diving deep into details of proposed solutions. Perhaps most importantly, I've served on nonprofit boards for the past 20 years, so I understand the power of a small group of committed people to effect meaningful change. I have some ideas about how to preserve what we love about Longmont, and you'll hear some tonight, but I'm not running because I think I have the best ideas. If someone has a better idea, let's do that. Alex has great ideas about transportation. John and Meg and I are advocates of ranked choice voting. Steve and I agree on the need for a city council to speak with our business community a little bit more frequently. And Jake, Crystal, and I agree on the need to keep Longmont affordable for working families because diversity isn't just about political ideology or racial identity, it's about economic diversity as well. I'm not running to launch a career or to promote an agenda, I'm running to serve the people of this city. To me, that means engaging in dialogue on every side of an issue, finding new ways to connect with our residents, understanding what the majority of Longmont wants, and voting accordingly. We had 46% voter turnout for city council elections in 2023. We are blessed with an engaged, active, and informed population, and those voters, those voices are the reason we have such a forward-thinking city. I would be, it would be an honor to represent them.
Okay, we are going to now go to our questions, and you will all have a minute and a half, and we're not gonna put Matthew first every time, so we'll start with Teresa with this one. I'm gonna put a couple of questions together, because we've had some audience follow-up on this one. With strains that growth puts on our infrastructure, housing affordability, transportation, and quality of life, what specific proposals would you like to see implemented to help manage Longmont's growth for the next five to 10 years? And one of the specific questions here said, do you believe in reducing traffic by only putting higher-density developments like more than 10 units per acre within walking distance, a quarter-mile of major transit hubs and shopping? So we're getting requests for specific proposals, so I'm gonna ask you each to give me, to give us, three specific proposals.
First, I'm gonna start with the traffic question, because we were all waiting for that one, weren't we? I mean, traffic, right? I would not make a blanket statement about where I would put density in any particular project, and I think that that's part of our problem right now, is that we look at density and we look at development projects, and we look at them all the same, right? We look at Envision Longmont and we go, well, it says that we should be able to do that there. Well, that there might not be what's exactly right for there. And I really think that we need to spend a lot more time talking to the community and looking at the community character around the proposed development, and take each development on its own merits and look at it individually. In terms of specific projects, again, I'm gonna say that I believe in coordinated growth, and that means looking at all of the elements that come into effect when we look at a project: transportation, transit, nearby services, density of the neighboring neighborhoods, and the wants and needs of the community that are there. That's what I would be looking at when I would be considering any of these projects. And I think that that's kind of the basis of where I stand with this. I also think we need to account for different stages of life. Most of the projects that are out there right now are for young individuals not living with families, and that really isn't most of Longmont, and so that would be part of what I would be looking at, is a better diversity of housing stock.
All right, down the line we go. I really like what you said, and I really think that increasing walkability and bikability is critical for addressing traffic concerns. However, we do live in an unfortunately unwalkable county, so we are still going to need public transportation to really cover the rest of the needs. So all about making sure that we have local communities, that we are increasing cycling safety, and making sure that we are creating more opportunities for people to use public transportation and make sure that it is accessible for everyone. I also do really want to bring up the point of accessibility with our housing. We need to make sure that we are providing options for our aging population. We need to make sure that we are providing housing accommodations for people with disabilities. So I would really like to make sure that we are making intentional buildings with that in mind. I also just want to say I think we need to be keeping as much local as possible. I am definitely against any venture capitalists coming in and buying up properties. I think we need to be very intentional about our developments and who we are encouraging to come here. And again, we need to be creating pathways towards homeownership for people like me, who are currently just making it with rent and a master's degree. So I think that those are, yeah, my main things, and yeah, there you go.
I hope I remembered all the questions properly. The big thing was the strains on growth and how to manage all of that. So to me, seven, 10, and 14-story buildings are only gonna make everything a lot worse. There's no way it can help. Recently, with all the construction on Kaufman, Longmont lost, I believe, is either 120 or 140 parking spaces. So that's gonna make shopping downtown harder, which will make it harder on the businesses. I wanted to point out that 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago, 50% of the residents of Longmont would leave... I'm sorry, I'm saying that backwards. 50% of the jobs in Longmont, people came here from Boulder and Louisville and Lafayette to work in Longmont. Right now, over 50% of the Longmont residents are leaving to go to work, because we've lost a lot of higher-end jobs: Mac Store, Amgen, places like that. So we need to help our businesses succeed so they can hire more people, more people can work locally, they won't be driving half hour or 45 minutes each way to go to work every day. There'll be less traffic, and we need to try to find some more higher-end jobs to help that end of the market also. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. So for me, we need to look at transit corridors. Right now, when we sprawl, it's very expensive for the city to continue to pay for that infrastructure. So what can we do, looking at transit corridors, to kind of maximize where people are living? We need to also increase the different types of inventory that people are looking for. Right now, we have a lot of for-rent properties. We need more for-sale properties. We need either starter homes. We need transitional housing. We need houses for seniors. If we can put it next to transit corridors near businesses, we can limit how much people have to travel to where they need to go. For me, it's also a multimodal approach. I'm not telling you to get out of your car. I'm telling you, if we have a great bike infrastructure and we have a great network with RTD, some people might choose to do that, and you might have the opportunity to go in your car, because six, 10 people chose to go on a bike, because there's a good infrastructure for that. And I also think that we have a business imbalance. We need to grow our businesses here in town. We need our small businesses to thrive. Let's get people to come into town, and then let's keep them and trap them and get their tax dollars, spending money in our town, because we have the coolest shops in town. We also need some high-skill, high-paying jobs as well, so I'm gonna bring those with incentives into the city. Thank you.
I will zoom in on a few that are a little bit more narrow-focused. I do what Erie did. They made traffic circles, the standard intersection. I do what Erie did, they made traffic circles, the standard intersection, and you have to prove that a different intersection is better. I checked in all of Envision Longmont, traffic circles are only mentioned once for bicycling. They are safer, reduce traffic congestion, and are a lot less expensive for the city to maintain. I would love to legalize duplexes through quadplexes that are for sale in a lot more of the city, they're currently illegal in most of it. There's a big and bold thing that most people have never heard of called the land value tax. I would love if we stopped taxing buildings and only taxed the land. We'd have to reset the mill levy. But when you do that, it is by far the most efficient and fair form of taxation, and it is what helps keep cities fairly healthy and not go financially bust. So I'll give it over to Jake.
Thanks, John. And I appreciate that you mentioned Envision Longmont, because the question was about growth, and how we make sure that we are managing our growth effectively. And really, for me, it comes down to three things. It's we've got to choose the right projects, right? City council very often does not get the chance to be choosy. A lot of times, processes, as Councilmember Popkin knows, work their way through the process with council without ever having the chance to say yes or no on a specific project. So when a project comes forward that council can say yes or no on, like an annexation, for example, we should be choosy about whether or not that project actually meets the needs of our community. Like Alex said, the biggest need that we have in the city of Longmont is that workforce for-sale housing, that the homes that teachers, nurses can afford to buy, that's the kind of housing that we need to create more of. So how we do that is we choose the right projects, that's the first thing. The second thing is I appreciate John mentioning Envision Longmont as well, because part of the proposal that I support is trying to reinvest and potentially re-envision some of Envision Longmont. Envision Longmont's almost 10 years old at this point, it's time to take a look at where we're at, where our goals are, and whether or not we want to move forward in a different direction in some places, and fundamentally reinvest the community in those things. So I'll speak more tonight, I'm sure, about specific land use changes as well. I want to make sure that if property owners choose to turn properties into places that can support additional units, we do, as well as more investment in mixed-use development. So my time is down, but yeah.
All righty, so I've talked to a lot of constituents about this issue, and a lot of people are displeased with the amount of growth that we've seen. And I think Longmont has it really going good in that they got the growth piece right. But what's happening is, while we're growing, we're not balancing it with taking care of our infrastructure, making sure that we're bringing character that, or making sure the developments match the character of the neighborhoods, and making sure that we're thinking about the community around. Currently, as it stands, growth comes into a neighborhood, and the developers are usually responsible for providing, you know, parks and sidewalks and streets within that development. But I think what we're missing is we don't think about how that growth impacts the surrounding areas. Some of the solutions that I would propose is, one, don't approve growth unless it brings something valuable to that neighborhood. We have to ask ourselves, what is this neighborhood need that it doesn't already have, and what type of development can we bring in here that's going to match it? Lately, we've been seeing kind of the square, three, four-story buildings, and they're popping up all over the place. I think this is also because, as the Chair for the City of Longmont Housing and Human Services, I've spent a lot of time with that division, and currently, it's only made up of three people. We need to invest in that team so that they can do a better job at providing different types of growth, making sure that we're accommodating for the growth around the city, and making sure that the neighborhoods that that growth is going into matches the character.
I agree with a number of what people have said. We absolutely need to make sure that what we are building fits into what is already existing. We need to make sure that what we build is for the people that we need it to build for. We do have an aging population. We need to make sure that people can stay here, living in Longmont, that aren't, so that they're not climbing stairs after stairs, so that people can stay here and age well. Traffic growth, we have a problem in this country of being car-dependent. We are habituated to getting into our cars, and what we need to do is make it as easy as possible to break that habit. I think, in part, we have a communication problem. We do have some very innovative transit solutions. We have Ride Longmont, we have biking, we have free bus rides, we have Flex Ride from RTD, which honestly could be a phenomenal help to students who need to get to school, who aren't served by a bus, whose parents have to drive them because of open enrollment. We should be looking at specific solutions and communicating them well to the community so that the people who live here can take advantage of what already exists.
How many of you ever got into a traffic jam on East Rogers Road? How many of you know where East Rogers Road is? Great. How many of you gotten in a traffic jam near the Sugar Mill on East Rogers Road? Really? Impressive. Half the reason we're in the growth and traffic debacle that we're in right now is because we've only been able to build in certain parts of the city, because the other parts were not prioritized, not renewed, and not reinvested in. That's why you have so much development happening on the west side of town. That's the reality of it. That's why the Hoover Corridor is getting bogged down by more development, because you can't develop stuff right now in Boulder County, which is what owns the Sugar Mill right now, or where the jurisdiction that has the Sugar Mill. So that's why, number one, specific thing, is to manage our traffic by shifting our development into priority urban renewal areas: Sugar Mill, Lower Downtown, River District. We haven't built there for years, and there's a reason why, and we're working on that. And that's why that's going to be helpful in shifting our transportation patterns. Number two, making sure that a regional bike-share station is tied to new multifamily developments. Thank you. So that that is onsite and easily accessible for people to just hop on a bike-share and get around town, whether they have a bike or not, because bikes can be expensive, and that we have the bike lanes to do that. And number three, how many of you have gone to the airport in the last two months? Great. How many of you wish you had a dedicated bus route to get there, that you could get out of your car and get to the Denver Airport? That is number one on how we get everyone, regardless of socioeconomic status, out of their cars, in transit, and onto a plane.
We have an audience question that's pretty close to a question we had gotten online. So I'm going to read both of these, and we will start this one with Meg. So we'll go. The audience question was, "Should Longmont's lowest-wage workers earn wages that keep up with our higher cost of living, and what is the role for city council to raise the minimum wage?" And the question that we had had from online, "What actions would you take to bring in jobs that pay above minimum and living wages that will help people move up the economic ladder?"
What's the question?
Can we read that diagram again?
Nicola, what's the question?
Well, the question is, "What actions would you take to bring in jobs that pay above minimum and living wages to help people move up the ladder?" And that does kind of sit right on top of this one, which was asking what the city council's role in doing that would be.
Yeah, so I hear two questions in there. The first one is, "What should we do with the lowest-income earners to help them afford living in Longmont?" And then, secondly, "What should we do to increase wage growth overall?" So I strongly believe that we need to be supporting everybody from the bottom up, just based on the fact that this is a consumer economy. And when consumers have more money, they are more likely to spend that money at our local businesses. So I want to make sure that we are supporting local business and helping them through whatever transition we come up with. But I do think it's incredibly important for us to be prioritizing putting more money into the hands of the consumers so that it can be reinvested in our local economies. If we have restaurants that we're worried about going under because they have to raise prices, well, let's raise wages so people can afford higher prices. So that's my stance. And then I think, you know, overall, we want to be building more jobs for Longmonters, but we also need to make sure that you're able to afford to live in Longmont, to work here, so then we don't have as much traffic and et cetera, et cetera. So I am definitely in support of raising wages across the board, but I think especially starting from the bottom up. Thanks.
This is a sticky wicket, because it is important for people to make enough money that they can live in the city that they want to live in. But nothing is isolated by itself, there's always repercussions. California did this a year and a half ago, they raised minimum wage to 20 bucks for fast-food workers. Within a year, there were several thousand fast-food restaurants that had gone out of business, 65,000 people had lost their jobs, because the restaurants also, it could, they could now, it would now be worth their while to get more automation and put people out of work. So you can't just say, "We're going to help this over here," and not look at the repercussions that are absolutely going to happen. When you raise minimum wage, there's a lot of people that can go back to their boss and get a raise, so they can afford to spend more, but for senior citizens, sorry, senior citizens on a fixed income, they're stuck, they can't make more money. Boy, that time goes by really fast. The best way to have wages go up is to have workers get more experience. Any decent business will keep a good, hard-working employee and pay them more, rather than hiring new people and have to retrain them over and over again. So, and I don't have time to answer about how to bring new businesses into town, new higher-end businesses, but that's something we definitely need to look into. Thank you.
This is Alex Calcoffer. Thanks for the question. This is a complicated one. I grew up, I started working at my mom's restaurant when I was 13. She barely paid herself, because margins are super thin when it comes to small businesses, small restaurants. Walmart can buy something cheaper than a small business can buy it. So we need to be very delicate when we talk about raising the minimum wage. We need to work with our surrounding communities so we can elevate them altogether, because if we raise minimum wage here, businesses could shift over to Weld County. We were listening to the folks during the fishbowl, and for the flower bin, you can deliver something from Weld County into Longmont cheaper. So we need to work with our surrounding communities to raise the minimum wage together slowly, so small businesses can support that growth. We also need to work with St. Brain Valley School District and Front Range Community College for education and help with career growth opportunities. We also need to bring in businesses, high-skill businesses, which we can do with incentives for building out there, renovating or building new sites, we can do that. We can also try pushing the cost of living down. We can try to lower the cost for utilities, because folks who are on fixed incomes, it doesn't matter what they're making, it's set. So the city can try to push costs down as much as we can, and I think that's what the city can do, and work with the business community to raise the wages gradually altogether. Thank you.
This is John Lumke. This one is sticky. Do I really want people to make more money? Yes. There's a problem with raising the minimum wage, and that is similar in NAFTA. A bunch of people will benefit, and a bunch of businesses will close, and a bunch of people will lose their jobs. What I would love to do instead is implement a reverse income tax to directly give money to who are people on the low-income scale, eliminate the sales tax, because that is an aggressive tax that punishes poor people, and then we'll implement a land value tax. I'm going to bring that up again. Why? Right now, to raise wage, well, the only way to raise wages is to improve productivity. Our current tax system punishes businesses from improving their productivity. We should not do that, because when a business buys equipment, they have to pay taxes forever on that equipment. So what is their incentive to buy new equipment that's more efficient, so that they can become more productive and raise people's wages? So I would not want to increase the minimum wage until we fix a bunch of the other problems that we have first. I would love to go into what all the other benefits of land value tax, reverse income tax, and eliminating the sales tax would be, but with less than 30 seconds left, I can't get there. Thanks.
Jake Marsing. So some folks here at this table may believe in trickle-down economics, I believe in trickle-up economics. I believe that when you invest in working people, communities thrive. So the question was about what the city can do to support working-class folks? The answer is, give them a raise. Raise the living, enact a Longmont living wage. And the data has shown on this, over and over again, in communities that raise the minimum wage, there is more money in consumers' pockets, small businesses. Yes, there is an adjustment period, where you do see some closures and sometimes a 1% to 3% price increase. But on the back end of that, you get working-class folks that are thriving and able to make it in this community. And when I've talked to business owners, including after that fishbowl, including folks who sat in that circle and said how hard a minimum wage increase would be, they all told me, "We understand, and we will stay in Longmont if we can do it," right? So this is something we can do to invest in the business community. And I know Alex mentioned we have to do it with surrounding communities. The reality is, surrounding communities are waiting on Longmont. Longmont's been the community dragging its feet on this issue over and over again, and I understand why. I understand that the business community is concerned, and that's why, when I work to enact this policy, I'm going to sit down with Scott Cook at the chamber, I'm going to sit down with folks in the community and say, "How can we offset this with red tape reductions? How can we create permitting support to make it easier for you to operate? And ultimately, how can we invest in our community?" To answer the question about investing in primary employment, I believe we need to make sure that LEDP, our Economic Development Engine, has the support they need, they're asking for 50-50 funding, and I support getting them there.
All right, I'm going to geek out. So just a fun fact, someone who makes minimum wage or is on a fixed income cannot afford, or I'm sorry, cannot qualify for an affordable housing unit. Do you guys get how crappy that is? Someone who is living on that wage cannot even afford or get qualified to live in the units that we created for them, something seriously wrong with our system. And let me say it with this, my husband's in the back, and he's a small-business owner. So I've got to see the best of both worlds. I've served vulnerable populations for a really long time, and I helped him run his business as well. And this is what I think about minimum wage. Should we raise minimum wage so people can support their families? Absolutely. But not unless the city and other stakeholders are serious about supporting our small businesses. It will be easier for us to support an X number of amount of small businesses and pour in resources and funding to them than it would for us to take half of Longmont's population, which is about 50-some-thousand people, and try to support their basic needs. So this is not a one or the other. I think we can have the best of both worlds, it just depends on how we approach the issue. And I think that's my time, but yeah, I want to geek out more with you guys, but that's my perspective.
So I'll speak first to minimum wage. I am a little concerned about how it would impact small businesses, because our Main Street, give me one second, our Main Street is just now starting to thrive, and I do not want to cripple those small businesses, which are, is the backbone of our community. Entrepreneurism is so important, and costs have been rising from things that have nothing to do with that. I would, however, be very interested in exploring a minimum wage increase for companies that are 150 people-deep or above. I think they are more able to spread out those costs over multiple locations than our small individual companies here in Longmont. Economic development, we are, thank you, we are set up to be a chips city. That is, we already are offering incentives to have people come here to create microchips. I think that is excellent. I would also like to double down on green tech, carbon, carbon batteries, I think would be an excellent addition to our primary employers here. We have plenty of sun for people to, to use. Thank you.
Matthew Popkin. So I'm not opposed to a living wage increase, but I think we have to be strategic about when that gets put into place. And right now, there's a ton of economic uncertainty, and there's changing, literally just last week, there's changing state policy that we learned about is impacting the restaurants directly. And so like, I'd like to let the dust settle a little bit. And I don't think that's a radical solution, but I think it's like a measured and careful approach here so that we can see what's needed on top of that. Because we do have the state minimum wage. We're grateful to be in a state of Colorado, which has a 1480 minimum wage, 1486, I think. And that's pegged to the CPI, Consumer Price Index, and that will be increasing each year, too. So we want to see what's the differential that we need to meet. So now, when we think about, and to Boulder County's credit, they did that under different economic considerations and under different economic situation, and we're adapting with the times. When I think about the types of employers that I want to attract here, I want to think about some of the competitive advantages that Longmont has. We run our own electric utility, Longmont Power and Communications. We run our own Wi-Fi utility, NextLight. So what are the technology industries that are going to be really attracted to that? Optics, robotics, electric aviation. We want to think about how do we advance our airport? Let's attract the companies that want to test and build electric aircraft right here. We have a fantastic drone program with St. Brane Innovation Center. Front Range Community College has one in five national optics labs and a Faric Robotics Lab, which I think, I don't know what that means, but I'm guessing John does. So that's what I would prioritize.
All right. So bear with me, I'm going to get there. Yeah? Okay. Teresa Simkins. Okay, so there are two kinds of businesses in any city, right? We've got what are called primary businesses, and we have secondary businesses or what we call small businesses. The primary businesses are those huge businesses that essentially drive the standard of living in a community. For instance, when IBM came in down the road all those years ago in the early '70s, they completely changed the nature of Boulder County, the quality of life, the standard of living in Boulder, in Gunbarrel, in Longmont, right? Okay, primary businesses are really important for that reason. They hire the most people, they usually pay the best wages, and they have the biggest influence on sales tax and your standard of living. Now, here's the trickle-up, and here's the rub that everybody else kind of touched on. But you raise the minimum wage, you have small businesses that are under enormous stressors, I'm not going to list them because Matthew did it for me, and they leave, or they close. Not all small businesses are the same, right? Not all small businesses add the same value to a community. The small businesses that create character in our community attract those primary businesses. Those businesses look at things like, "How cute is your main street? Is it all pawn shops, or is it cute restaurants and boutiques and things that people want if they're going to relocate with that big business?" So when those small businesses leave, it affects the whole character of Longmont, and they have a lot of reasons to leave at the moment because other cities nearby are offering them enormous incentives of $75,000 to $100,000 in, in an opportunity to move them there. So keep that in mind. And I'm not against raising the minimum wage, but I agree with Matthew that we really have to know all the unintended consequences of our policy decisions.
Okay. I'm going to shuffle the questions here a little bit, friends, just to change the topic a little bit. We have a, a question, I'm going to read it directly from the audience, and then I'm going to read the less, kind of, online version. They're kind of in the same territory. "I have heard a lot of whats but no how. No mention of how we will resist excursion of federal government." The question we have from online is, "What are your thoughts about Longmont's vulnerability and resiliency in the context of climate change?" So as you frame this, remember what kind of a state and federal environment we are in.
I know. I'm waiting for the climate to change. Steve Altshuler. Can I pass for the next question? Is this like a game show or something? So what I got out of that was basically the effects of Longmont on climate change in a nutshell. And how can we do something to help the climate, given the political climate? I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of good stuff to answer this one with. There's an old expression, "If you can't dazzle them with brilliance, baffle them with BS." I, I don't really see where there's much for Longmont to do with climate change. We're not a heavily industrialized city. We don't have coal plants that are polluting the area. You know, a lot of people want to use electric vehicles, but there's a big cost on that with electricity and how we produce electricity, whether it's windmills or solar panels, the cost from those situations for electricity is a lot higher than hydroelectric or coal. But again, we don't have the coal plants here. So I don't see where there's a whole lot that Longmont can do. It's good to be aware, it's good to recycle, it's good to save the environment as much as we possibly can, but we're not West Virginia with coal plants. So I apologize if I don't have a better answer. Steve Altshuler.
Hi, this is Alex Calcoffer. I disagree. I think that there's a lot that we can do. I think one of the things that we can do is find an appropriate composting site somewhere in Boulder County. Right now, excuse me, A1 Organics, you can't put almost anything in your compost. Let's find a compost facility that we can actually put compostable materials in. Let's find a site that is suitable. Let's work with Boulder County to find the site that is appropriate. Also, we have one of the lowest costs when it comes to electricity. Let's lean on that. Let's incentivize electric vehicles, charging stations. Let's incentivize solar panels and microgrids so we can have power batteries for those off-peak times where the sun's not shining. Let's incentivize green tech companies coming here to innovate and move us forward so we can be the example for the community as well as the country that we are really passionate about the climate because when there's a fire, it doesn't matter who you voted for. That fire is going to come over here, and if we're not prepared, then we're all going to suffer. So there's a lot that we can do, and I think we have to do it regardless of what the federal government's going to do, and we got to do it now. Thank you.
I don't think I can answer all of this in a minute and 30. Oh, John Lumke, sorry. I don't think I can answer this in a minute and 30 seconds. My master's degree was actually in energy and the environment. I thought that I would graduate and be building power plants. Learned all about the business, how to justify building renewable energy power plants, all that kind of stuff. The first step, most cost-effective, is to increase the efficiency of the buildings in the city. We should be doing that. If you haven't gotten Efficiency Works Audit, you should get one. Taught me a lot about how I should insulate my house, build out more EV infrastructure. I, I'm going to, I'm going to go with two that are probably not going to be very palatable or popular. Cows are the big, the big one. Beef production is incredibly water-intensive and produces the most greenhouse gases because methane is 20 times more potent than carbon dioxide. But culturally, and trying to get farmers to not raise cows, it would be very unpopular to try to reduce our beef consumption in the United States. The other one is pretty tricky, but if you really want to close nuclear, or close coal plants, I think that Longmont and Platte River Power should look at building nuclear power plants. If you look at how dangerous they are compared to every other source, only solar is safer. Everything else kills enormous numbers of people, even if, when you factor in all the nuclear disasters, they kill and harm way fewer people than everything else.
Jake Marsing. So my, my reading on the question overall is, "How do we respond as a city to the cruel policies of this administration? And when the federal government drops the ball, as it's going to do every single day between now and January the 20th, 2029, what are we going to do to address it as the city of Longmont?" I hear that in a couple of ways, not just on climate, but also on immigration, which I'll touch on very quickly. We have to make sure that our immigrant neighbors are protected and that we, as a city, continue our policy of never cooperating with ICE unless they have a lawful warrant. That's a state law that I helped pass when I was working in the Colorado General Assembly. The second piece, the second piece is making sure on climate that we are, Steve, strong disagree here, although I'm, I'm not surprised you don't have an answer on climate, but that we have a very clear path towards ensuring Longmont gets to 100% renewable energy. We hold PRPA's feet to the fire and hold them accountable when they aren't getting there. It's that last 5% that takes real political will. I see Mayor Peck is here, and I know she's worked so hard to get us there. I want to make sure Longmont does not continue to invest in fossil fuel infrastructure. The, the coal plant, the gas plant that's been proposed is not something that I would support if I were on the PRPA board, although I'm not running for that PRPA board. I also want to make sure we don't continue to approve development of new fossil fuel infrastructure in the city. We can take action on climate. I got into this race in part because I wanted to make sure Longmont was a place where my kids could live and make it, and I could pass this city on to them. If I cannot pass this planet on to them, what am I doing up here? I was proud to be endorsed this week as a Jane Fonda Climate PAC champion, which was kind of a weird thing, but very, very excited to be able to do it. Thank you.
All right, climate. So one thing I value the most is being able to wake up in the morning and walk over to my kitchen sink and pour me a nice cold glass of tap water and drink it. And I think this is a benefit that a lot of people don't have, people that are just 20 minutes away from us. Longmont is actually known to have some of the best-tasting water in Colorado, and I think that is super important and something that we should be very proud of and that we should protect. I think the city of Longmont is doing a wonderful job in leading, and leading as an example to other cities in that we protect our water resources, we're protecting our open space, and we're protecting our infrastructure and trying to become more green and clean. As your elected representative, I want to be crystal clear and saying that any type of legislation that comes to my desk, any decision and any changes to process and procedure that puts these things that we value and that we need at harm, I will not pass. And that's not just for me, it's for our children. It's for us to be sustainable as a community as we grow, and it's also something that we're going to have to think about as we grow because this could all be lost if we don't proceed with caution. Thank you.
We need to protect what it is that we have. We have open green space. We don't want to fill that up with sprawl or any other way. We have clean, delicious water. We want to make sure that our agricultural lands continue to use regenerative and we, regenerative methods, that we are good stewards of our land so that we do not leach chemicals and other things to poison our water supply. All of these things are true. These are reasons that we all live here in Longmont. They are reasons that we love being here. The clean air, the farmland, the water that is here, they are worth protecting. Longmont has long been on the cutting edge of making sure that we invest in, in renewable resources. That is the direction that I think our citizens have voted for us to go and that we should continue to go that, in that direction. Our engaged voters and populace need to stay engaged and be vocal to whoever is elected to make sure that we are the stewards of your voice, that we continue to protect what it is that means to be here, and we need to make sure that our community stays strong because resiliency comes from strong communities. It comes from strong ties between the people who live here. Being able to talk to each other and listen is paramount.
Matthew? There we go. In case you didn't know, Matthew Popkin. The, there are some, we need to, when we talk about responding to climate change, we need to think about what are we actually trying to solve? What are the problems we're actually trying to be more resilient to? That's extreme heat, high-wind events, fires, and floods. Four key things that we've already seen in or around this region. This is my day job. At Rocky Mountain Institute, an independent, nonpartisan, nonprofit, I advise cities across the country on how they can make them, their grids cleaner, their cities more sustainable, and their cities more resilient to climate change. Here are a few things we can do in this political climate. Number one, invest in battery storage technology to make our grid more flexible and more resilient. That did not get cut in the tax credit package that just got cut in July. Those tax credits still exist. We can underground our infrastructure. We already have a pretty high level of our infrastructure. I think it's about 60% of our poles and wires undergrounded. We can do even more. EV charging, some people have already brought that up, that is important. It reduces our reliance on petroleum companies. However, we need to be strategic in making sure that it's equitable. I was really proud to help Boulder County get $4.5 million, $4.9 million in equitable EV charging for multifamily properties two years ago. And then we need to make sure that we complete the resilient St. Brane project for our river corridor so that we are resilient to extreme floods. Lastly, we have to think about the impacts on our lowest-income populations here. Not all of them have air conditioning, and that is a real problem in extreme heats. We need to prioritize our investments to make sure that we are sustainable and resilient.
Hi, Teresa Simkins. So I think that when it comes to the federal government, to a very large extent, Longmont's going to have to go its own way because everything that is coming down on us really, for the most part, diverges from the spirit of Longmont and what we are about. When it comes to climate change in particular, I think those of us that were here for the flood, boy, did we learn a ton. And as Longmont often does, we innovated, right? We figured out a lot of changes that we were going to have to make to that river corridor in order to have a different outcome next time, and we pulled together to do those things. I think that it is time for us to do, to take another look at Envision Longmont. I was at Longmont when we did that. In hindsight, I, I don't think we did a great job of it, to be honest. And I think it's time that we go back to that, get a different community involvement protocol so that we have more community members involved and, in fact, maybe even driving the effort. And I think that we do look at things like all of the climate challenges that we are facing. That include things like, as Matthew said, like extreme heat and, and solar powering, and all of the things that we can actually incentivize our folks to take part in. My husband and I bought an electric vehicle because Longmont offered the incentives to help us with our charging. Those are great things that the city itself can do that have nothing to do with the federal government, that can help us do our little bit here in our little patch of the world.
Thornberry, Meg Thornberry. I would just like to echo what everybody has been saying about sustainability and about our practical ways of how we can lead by example in terms of how we go about using renewable energy and really focusing. My favorite saying is an indigenous saying that says, "We borrow today from our grandchildren's future." And I think that that is really what we need to have as our backbone when we are thinking about sustainability. I do want to speak more about, in terms of how do we form resistance, and it is through building community. So we need to know our neighbors in order to protect our neighbors, and exposure to people of different backgrounds is one of the fastest ways to increase levels of community and decrease levels. and decrease levels of discrimination. So I would love to create more community and diversity of bridging communities as well. And then finally, the last little tidbit that I think we could really use improvement on is more education about our current recycling and composting guidelines. I think we really need to be leaning into that and making sure that we are getting the most out of those services. So I would love to see little like Facebook ads that say like, "Hey, you can recycle this," or like, "Please don't throw that in there." So that is my last little tidbit. Thank you.
So I think everybody's had that one. We are going to start with you, Alex, on this one. We have two audience questions that have to do with housing. We've talked a little bit about it. Let me just read what we got from the audience here. This person says concerned with a lack of resources for unhoused people in Longmont. And then this person says, "I'm concerned about declining birth rates in connection with the proliferation of apartments. Longmont has earned the town the name Apartment. What is your vision for housing and what types of projects do you support?" And the one that was online very close to these as well. "A healthy city needs a mix of housing types to give entry points and economic mobility for anyone who wants to join the community. How would you make Longmont work for different types of housing?"
Alex Calcoffer. So I chair the Community Action for Boulder County. We have a housing problem. The Longmont Elks Lodge also helped with a project for tiny homes for veterans. I would love to see tiny homes for sing-, thank you. I'd love to see tiny homes for single parents with school-aged children. I think we need to get people out of their car, and I think we need to get them some dignity into a home, especially for those young kids that are living and going to school and they don't have a place to stay. I think that is the lowest hanging fruit, and I think we can all have compassion and build tiny homes for single family with parents and kids. We have to get those kids stable so they can get an education. I think that's one of the things that we can do right away really quickly. And then for the other homeless population, unhoused population, we need to have better services. We need to work with our center. We need to work with other government agencies to pump as much resources in there as possible so we can direct folks to those resources so we can get them in the houses that they deserve and give them the dignity that they deserve. We need to help our homeless population that wants to get into housing. We need to provide them the services. We need to be the advocates for the service for those organizations. And I think what we can do about the Apartment is we can look at other things that are attainable and affordable by giving incentives for those folks who can afford a duplex or a triplex or a townhouse. We gotta do something about that population, especially the vulnerable population. Thank you.
John Lemke. So I learned something really interesting about loans that makes those big apartment buildings so attractive. And this is something that came out of the savings and loan crisis in the 1980s, is the mortgage, the mortgages, the loans on those buildings count as cash on banks' books, which is crazy, but that's why they're so popular. They're for banks, they're not for people. In case that wasn't clear to everybody here, because I didn't know, I learned that recently. But what I would like to do, we really need to build more types of housing. The only thing that puts homeless people into the unhoused, into houses, is reducing the cost of housing. It's quite simply too, too expensive. We can reduce lot size minimums, we can reduce setback requirements, we can allow buildings to go to three stories, we could legalize single staircase apartments. These are all things that can increase the density of the city without just building gigantic apartment buildings. That's traditionally, like in the 1920s, the types of houses that were built that people could afford, and I think we would, we really should legalize that again, because that's going to be the shortest, cheapest, easiest path for us to get people into housing that they can afford.
No, it's good, John. I see what you're doing. It's okay. No, no. So I see this question really as divided in two different areas. How do we serve unhoused folks in Longmont and how do we create housing stock that meets community need? These are both, I think they're similar, but they're different. We have to make sure as a city that we are not overextending our nonprofit partners anymore. For too long, Longmont has given all of our homeless services to frankly, right now, hope. I know Alex mentioned the hour center. The hour center doesn't serve unhoused folks. They don't serve the unhoused community. They serve folks who are dealing with food insecurity, dealing with other issues. They don't address homelessness. If we are going to actually address that issue, we as a city have to take that issue seriously and invest in the places that are going to make a real difference. I support making sure we find paths towards housing. We explore ideas about housing-focused shelter. We get where we can on that issue. But ultimately, I think the spirit of the questions being combined is right, because if we aren't creating housing stock that meets community need, we're lacking. Longmont needs to create more for-sale workforce housing that folks can buy and put down roots in. For me, I like to compare two development proposals. The True North proposal up behind Costco right now is an example of the kind of housing stock we need, but that took a lot of public investment to get. The other end of that spectrum is an annexation proposal like what's proposed on Quail Road, which is right now around 310 units of more rental housing. That doesn't get us where we want to go as if we're going to be a community where working folks can put down roots. So we have to make sure we're addressing community needs, both for our unhoused population and for working families looking to make it.
So my day job is a family resource navigator with the Emergency Family Assistance Association. I've been doing this work for about six years now, and I meet with families every day and do budgets with them, and we talk about their expenses and what they can afford and how much their income is. And not only is the cost of housing increased, but the cost of everything else has increased, which has made it extremely difficult. So do your, so to your question as of what are we going to do to help folks out? One of my priorities as your elected official will be to secure our local safety net. I think all of these ideas are amazing, but they take time. And what happens to the families between now and then? We need to make sure that we're catching families, and these are families with full-time jobs. These are families sometimes with a full-time job and a part-time job. And if an emergency happens, which no one is exempt to emergency, there's no resources currently to help them out, and that's a problem. Why? Because we know that once folks become homeless, it's even harder to get them housed. In addition to that, just thinking about the different solutions, I'm committed to not only providing and making sure that we have a secure safety net, but also looking at the type of affordable housing that we're investing into. Jake mentioned the True North development, and this is a great development if people can get qualified for a home loan. The city was just recently talking about it, that a majority of the people that applied for that development, which was middle-income housing, couldn't even, couldn't even get qualified for the loan, which kind of defeats the purpose. So we need to look at all of those different things as well.
The easiest and most effective way of dealing with houselessness is to keep people in their homes so that they do not become houseless. We need support for people who are on the edge, and I am definitely in favor of supporting programs that do that. It is less disruptive to the people, it is less cumbersome on all of the programs that support the people once they do become homeless. Boulder County and Longmont collaborate in order to meet individuals when they do become houseless and are asking for support. They meet them and they assess them through coordinated entry, and they make sure that they meet them where they are. When we are dealing with houselessness, which no municipality has figured out, there is not a silver bullet, there is no one solution to all of this issue. Otherwise, someone would have done it by now. Because of that, we have to meet each individual, each human being, that any of us could be in that situation without our own support if we are in the same circumstances, with compassion, with empathy, and with pragmatism as figuring out what it is that we can do forward. And as far as the supply, we need to be building smaller, which is less expensive to do, it's less expensive to keep.
Matthew Popkin. So I want to just briefly address a few comments that were made. First, if we're, these are two very different questions. We are, you can't solve homelessness by solving it with the affordable, attainable market-rate housing. Those are completely different populations we're trying to serve, so it's not entirely fair to, to ask us to solve housing, the same question for the unhoused and the people who are looking to transition to different types of housing in their life. We also can't reduce the cost of housing to the transition point between like homelessness and being able to buy a house. That doesn't work. We have to look at, I love what Alex was saying, I would love to work with him on the tiny house communities, learning from our partners at Habitat and Veterans Community Project, as long as we include supportive services, that's my friendly amendment. You have to have supportive services like we have with some of our other supportive housing projects that the city runs, because otherwise you're not supporting people into that transition of a new stage of life that they need help with. When we think, shifting gears to the market, when we think about the different needs in our market, we've been building predominantly rental housing for one very obvious reason, and that's the construction defects law that's existed at the state level, that has drastically limited what would be insured from a for-sale attached product in terms of condos, town homes, and others. You still see some, but not many. I was very proud, after learning about that on council, I led our council's effort to support the reform bill that did pass this legislative session on the construction defects law, and I submitted my first ever state testimony calling for the reform of that. And then I also want to correct one thing, just wanted to note the Quail Road project, it was all 310 rental units. I opposed it at the time, it is now back in the process, and it has about a third of for-sale housing units that are now part of that, making it a much better balanced project. Is it perfect? No, but it's moving in the right direction from better balance. Thank you.
Teresa Simkins. So I'm going to disagree a little bit with Matthew about these being two totally different populations. They are and they aren't. I think what we're talking about are folks experiencing homelessness who, you know, are literally in transition. Maybe they're living in their car, this is not a long-term plan for them, they are not resistant to the idea of being housed, they just can't quite get there. And then we have folks who are persistently homeless, who have, have a lot of other issues involved, oftentimes with mental health or substance use, that are influencing their choices to be unhoused. So first, with affordable housing, that can actually help the folks who are in transition. But here's what I want to know. A lot of our pro-development advocates in town just say that the only answer is to build. We have to build, and we have to build higher density. Okay, but how do we make what we have more affordable? And then how do we keep it affordable? Because eventually, we're all built out. And then where do we build? On open space, on conservation easements? Yeah, that's what they're going to do. So I want to know how we make what we have more affordable and keep it affordable for the people that are going to need to live here, like our working-class folks. I think that we need to have incentives for first-time home buyers, public-private partnerships like True North, but now we know. We also have to figure out how to get those folks loans. There are ways to do it, and we can do it. We're innovative in Longmont, but we have to do it, because just offering the housing if they can't get the loan does not solve the problem. And I'll have to stop there, because she's waving it.
Meg Thornberry, and as your resident social worker, I do have to talk about the trauma that usually leads to homelessness, and then also being homeless is also incredibly traumatic. So we really need to make sure that we are providing wraparound services so that we are treating the whole person and not just the persons on the street. And not just the persons on the street, but the people who are sleeping on friends' couches. I have clients who sleep at their, you know, parents', partner's, house's couch, sorry, apartment couch. We need to be able to expand apartments to be more than just one-bedroom apartments that are affordable, and instead make two, three-bedroom apartments affordable so that we can support families and keep kids off of couches. I think that we also need to be very mindful about how we do these things, because we cannot just disappear people, and so we do need to make sure that we are providing places for people to go. I would love to have public bathrooms available again, but that is going to need to have a place for people to go. So I am all for a shelter to make sure that we can have a place again for people to go, because they do not just magically disappear. I don't know if you've heard about the conservation of matter, but people do not just poof. So those are my main things, and I think in terms of the apartments, babies are not buying apartments, so we do need to have housing for workers. And I agree that we definitely need to make some changes in order to make those opportunities available to a median or below income. Thanks.
Hi, Steve Altjulier. There's definitely a problem with the missing middle as far as being able to find entry-level units for people to get into the real estate market. The construction defects law had a lot of unintended consequences that weren't exactly rocket science. The contractors stopped building condominiums because they didn't want to be liable for 10 years. Some steps have been made to start to reverse that, but it hasn't happened all the way yet. About nine months ago, I was talking to the city council, and I pointed out that the very first condo I ever owned, back in whatever year that was, was a converted apartment building. It works out really well, because every apartment has their own address, they've got their own utilities, and it's a relatively simple thing to change the licensing or the post office structure and make them into condos. And if they're more than 10 years old already, I would think that would invalidate the contractors, sorry, the construction defect law. I haven't heard anything back from anybody about that. Also, Longmont is a home-rule city. There might be a way that we can use that aspect, sorry, getting along over there, use that aspect to circumvent the law, sorry, about the construction defects law. So there are things that we can do, we can explore, we can be creative, like someone else said earlier. We can get more low-income housing, condos, whatever, for people to start getting into the market, and my time is up.
Okay, we're ready for the next question. You ready for this, John? Going to switch you up big time here. What ideas do you have for taking advantage of the expected overflow from the Boulder Sundance Festival?
How do I expect to take advantage of the overflow?
What ideas do you have for taking advantage of the expected overflow? That's bringing a lot of people from the Boulder Sundance Festival. We're closer than it used to be.
Yeah, this is not a question that I expected to get at all. One of the things that I hope that people do take advantage of, because I've done, wow, it would be great if the city could put in a waiver for Airbnb for that time period, because man, it's great if you can rent out a bedroom in your house, because you can make bank, and there's going to be a lot of people coming here. So I would love if the city had like a one-week waiver with Sundance is here, because of being, that's like great money for somebody straight to their house. I think we definitely would want to advertise the hotel that's downtown, that's getting built. I don't know if it'll be done in time for the first Sundance, but that's a great way to get a lot of people here, close to our downtown. Man, I would love for us to do something at the airport. I have this like vision, because I talked to a guy who was a pilot. There's a huge unused space at the airport, and it would be amazing for us to do something, I feel like, at the airport, like if we had concerts with the mountains in the background. It's quite a killer view, for those of you who have ever been near the airport. I don't know if people from Sundance would be down for that, but it seems like the airport would be a great venue to set something up during Sundance. Thanks.
Jake Marsing. So I was just as excited as anybody when I heard that the Sundance Film Festival was coming to Boulder, and then my, my next thought was, okay, what is the impact on Longmont, right? Both positive and negative. Raise your hand if you've ever been to the Sundance Film Festival here. Okay, we have two hands, including my mother, so that's a win for us. No, look, the reality is this event is going to have some impact on Longmont. I am not convinced that it's going to be this giant economic boom for our city, that it may be for Boulder or surrounding communities. We need to make sure that any impact that the city does deal with is something we can anticipate, expect, be prepared for. The last thing I would want is to have visitors from, you know, whatever part of the country they're coming from, come to this area, stay in Longmont, and leave with a bad taste in their mouth. their mouth. So we got to make sure that that happens. The one idea I do have, and this actually came from a conversation I had with someone who works in the city's sustainability office, was counter-programming, essentially, through the sustainability office, to create a sustainability film festival, where what we can do is offer a look at what Longmont is doing, all the innovative things that we are doing as a city to become more economically and environmentally sustainable. So that was some counter-programming that I really believe we can do. We can take opportunities as a city to show off Longmont, to draw people here, to make sure that we can get as much benefit from Sundance as possible, even if we aren't necessarily going to see maybe the economic boom that Boulder will see, so long as we're making sure that our residents who are here are not overly negatively impacted, would be my goal.
All right, I'm going to say my name for the first time tonight. Crystal Preto here, candidate for Longmont City Council at-large. So I've never been to Sundance, and quite frankly, I'm not that familiar with it, if I'm being honest, and I don't, I don't think that's my mistake. I also didn't realize that I was going to be asked this question tonight, but it seems like a pretty, like, operational question. I do hear all of my friends and contacts talking about Sundance, and talking about how is Longmont planning for the increased amount of people that we're going to see during this time? And there's a whole lot of talk about transportation. Where are people going to park? Where are people going to sleep? Et cetera, et cetera. So I'm hoping that Longmont is doing their diligence and making sure that they're planning in coordination with Boulder and the surrounding areas to make sure that these folks have transportation, and people are not driving around like be super wild and crashing and hitting people. I also want to make sure that we are planning and making sure that it doesn't have unintended consequences for residents like me who have no idea what's going on, and I'm just trying to get to Safeway and buy a loaf of bread. And it's a real thing, and so we have to think, okay, how do we make it super efficient for the people that need to get there and have them have a wonderful time so that we can promote Longmont, we can promote Boulder, and have them come back? But also, how do we plan for the residents that are here that are not going, and making sure everybody's safe and sound at the end of the night? And so that's what my ideas would be, and my hope is.
I too am going to introduce myself, Regan Sage. I am actually extremely excited for Sundance to be coming to Boulder. I think we really want more visitors to Longmont, because as prices are going up everywhere, it really shouldn't be only on the residents of Longmont to support all of our restaurants, all of our businesses, and this is a great opportunity for us to show off really what we have. Beyond what is already in existence, I think it would be fantastic for us to have a festival of our own, that, not a film festival, because people are getting film already in Boulder, but either music or comedy, something that really speaks to Longmont. Our artists here, we have galleries, we have artists, we have musicians here. Why shouldn't we show off what we already have? And at the same time, it, we can have people in Longmont engaged, attending whether or not they go and enjoy Sundance themselves. It is something for us to share with the world, and at the same time, it could be a real boom for us as well. I met with Visit Longmont there, definitely thinking about what to do for this. I think we do want to think about traffic on 119. How can we easily get people up and down from Boulder? Maybe we have a park-and-ride at Boulder County Fairgrounds, maybe we have, maybe we have shuttles that go from our, from our hotels. I think the opportunities are there.
I'm extremely prepared for this question, because I talk about it almost every day. The very first thing I will do if elected is create a city task force to handle, to discuss the opportunities and challenges for Sundance, and I'll tell you why. We're expecting probably 80,000 to 100,000 people to come to this region, generally for Sundance. That's based on estimates from Park City over the last couple of years. Last year in 2024, $138 million were spent, from an economic development standpoint in Park City. $14 million of that was in tax revenue. So how do we capture that opportunity and mitigate those challenges as much as possible? That's what I want you all to help me answer. That's the purpose of a task force, though, right? It's to pull in a lot of different sectors of the community and parts of our community, and figure out what are the challenges and opportunities. The second thing, I'd want to work with our county partners to make sure that we can accelerate timelines on rehabilitating the fairgrounds, so that it can serve as overflow for events. There's a master plan that's out there, it looks great, let's operationalize that. The third thing, that bus to Denver International Airport? Yeah, we definitely need that. Number four, I heard the short-term rental conversation. Why go to Airbnb when we can do Loco B&amp;B? Let's create our own service there. We know how to run a housing authority, let's apply that to short-term housing. Let's capture that additional revenue that Airbnb would skim off the top, and let's fund our parks, our transportation, and our public safety. And then lastly, who remembers when the most devastating fire in our region was? 2021, what month? December to January, right? That's the same time when there could have dry drought conditions in the winter. We need to be prepared for evacuation routes, we need to make sure our guests know what the evacuation routes are, and we need to have our public safety being prepared. There's my run-on sentence.
Okay, so I love some of Matthew's ideas, but I'd like to hear how he's going to pay for those, because having been staff, I'm really used to city council standing up and saying, you know what we need? We need, we need a bunch of people to do this work, and we're not going to give you any more resources, and keep doing your day job, too. So yes, we need to get our short-term rental policies in order, and I would love to see some exceptions around the time of Sundance. That's certainly doable. They do it in other places that have big festivals, and it would help folks here. And if you talk to people in Park City, they'll tell you that they all get out of town when Sundance comes, right? So you rent out your house, and you get the heck out of Dodge, and you make money while you're doing it. We need to invest in advertising our wonderful downtown. Local tourism dollars are fantastic, right? Come here, spend a bunch of money, and then go away. And we get to keep your money, and that's great for everybody involved. We need to get our airport in order, because we will have more private planes flying in then, and we haven't talked about this a lot, because this is an Ward 2-only situation, but our airport is of great concern in Ward 2, and we already have a lot of noise and a lot of issues with our airport. But this is a big chance to market ourselves. One of the things that we always said on the comms team at Longmont was that every single interaction we have with anybody in or outside Longmont was a chance to show them how great Longmont was, and that is absolutely what's happening here. So there are a lot of great ideas here that we could test and see if they worked, and definitely use it as a chance to market Longmont to some of those primary businesses I was talking about earlier. Thank you.
I'm still Meg, and I really like what both Teresa and Matthew talked about. I do agree that we need to get our airport in Ward 2 fully ready to handle private jets. And I think the other major thing that I would love to see as a goal is to try to make it so that nobody has to rent a car if they are coming to Longmont. Let's provide transportation from the airport to Longmont, so you don't need a car for that, and then from Longmont to Boulder, so you don't need a car for that. So I think that would be our top priority for the sanity of people like Crystal, who are just trying to make it to Safeway, and making sure, again, that we are able to capture the additional income from those short-term rentals during that time. And I really also agree that we need to be making Longmont as appealing as possible in this time, so let's make sure that we have the cheaper hotels, let's make sure that we have more advertising for our restaurants, let's make sure that they have enough staff at those times to handle all of the extra people. So I think this is a great opportunity to take advantage of something new and exciting, but I think our main focus needs to be on making sure that transportation is provided by Longmont, and so we can avoid having a huge influx of cars. Thanks.
Steve Alchuler. Before I answer that question, I would just like to finish from the previous question about housing, and I want to point out that the city fees add 24% to the cost of every house, whether it's a house or a condo. So if you had a $600,000 house, it would be about 460, except for all the fees that the city takes, that they charge the builder and so forth. So that's a big part of why things are so expensive in Longmont. As far as the overflow from the Boulder Sundance Festival, what I would like to see is a coordinated joint promotion with motels, businesses, and restaurants, and that needs, should be done in coordination with the Chamber of Commerce. We have a lot of great businesses in Longmont. People are going to come here and stay for several days or a week or more. They will be going to local restaurants, they'll be going to local shops. I think the Chamber of Commerce could help get together, almost maybe like a disco card or something, where if you go to all these different shops, you can get some points and win things, whatever it is, to help encourage these new visitors to Longmont to try as many of the local shops in Longmont as possible. Thank you.
This is an exciting question. This is a marketing question. I think we have a lot of potential. We are the gateway to a lot of the beautiful nature in Colorado. We are the gateway to Rocky Mountain National Park. This is our chance to shine and show the world what Longmont can be. We have event spaces, like the same frame, the Elk Lodge, the museum, that we can host satellite movie-watching. We can also have awesome festivals, like what LDDA does, by closing off some of the streets. We can work with WIBI and Left Hand to have concerts during the same time. We're going to work with RTD, and Karen and I are going to work and get that airport ride. I've been beating that dead horse, we're going to get it. The BRT to Boulder, that is almost done. That is going to connect us to Boulder, and that's going to get folks to Longmont very quickly. We do need to communicate to our residents how this is going to impact them. Most people here probably read the city line, and we need to communicate to the city and the residents here to make sure that they are on board as well, because this is going to be a huge influx of people. But let's make it where we can get all of the sales tax revenue from all of our restaurants. Let's really make this a marketing stance for us. Let's really work on a PPP, Public Private Partnership, to make sure that we are working with our businesses and the city to make sure that we're prepared for this, because this is our time to shine. Thank you.
Okay, we are at the mercy of the clock. It's eight o'clock. Have you answered this one yet?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, you're preparing for the next one.
Who's ready to go, Nicolette?
You were anticipating. Okay, well, we are, we are to the time of doing wrap-ups. You all get a three-minute wrap-up, and I was indeed going to call on you first.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, Nicolette, and thanks again to LAD and to LPM and all of these amazing folks for coming out tonight. My name is Jake Marsing. I grew up here in Longmont, just above the poverty line, to parents who split up when I was young, and a mom who worked really hard to make it, who's in the back of the room and has been an instructor here in this building for almost 20 years now. I know what it's like to struggle in this community, and I know what it's like to see Longmont make amazing things possible for working people. Today, after growing up that way, my wife and I are raising our kids in this community in a nice house with good jobs, and we are trying really hard to make it every day. The struggle that I faced as a kid is the same struggle that working families in this city are facing every single day. I cannot promise to solve every issue on council. There's a lot that we did not get to tonight that I was ready to talk about, airport, all sorts of issues. What I can promise is that if you give me the opportunity to serve this community that I love so deeply, I will fight for working people, I will listen, and I will serve your needs as best as I can every single day. I want to make Longmont work for working folks. That's who we've been throughout our history, that's where we're going to go. I really hope that I can continue this conversation with you as we move through the campaign. I appreciate everybody sharing their ideas here. My name is Jake Marsing. You can learn more about me at my website, jakemarsing.com. I hope I can count on your support. Thank you.
Crystal Preto here. So I would just like to thank all of you folks for coming out tonight and being committed to seeing who's running for city council and being a part of this process, because it's so important. I also just want to say that being born and raised here in Longmont, I'm committed to Longmont, right? I'm raising my two children, my, I have a 10-year-old and a 15-year-old, who are being raised in Longmont, and so I extremely care about Longmont. I also want to say that the election is this November 4th, okay? And this is a pretty big election, because we're going to elect two at-large, one Ward 2, and a new mayor. So the makeup of our council is going to change significantly, and I cannot stress enough that we have to make sure that we bring people into council that understand the challenges we face from the ground up. We can no longer elect people into council who only know the problem at the surface. We need people who understand it from a systemic level, from the ground up, so we know how to tackle it. We've seen time and time again, wonderful solutions come to the table, but they only meet the problem here, and we continue to see the problems arise and arise and arise. So today, I am urging you guys, with every piece of my being, to do your research, look into the candidates that you want to see serve on council, because it will make the difference of what we see and how we live and what we experience for the next four to eight years. Again, Crystal Preto, candidate for Longmont City Council. You can learn more about me at crystalforlongmont.org. And if you're interested in helping me with my campaign, which I need a lot of help, there's a sign-up sheet, and help could look like you put your, my sign on your lawn. Help could look like you donate $10, and there's a scan code out there. And help could look like, if you really want to get some exercise this fall, going and knocking doors or calling voters for me. So thank you so much. I hope you all have a wonderful evening, and I hope to see you around.
As we've heard tonight, the next city council will face plenty of challenges. Affordability, preservation of our natural resources, determining how we will grow as a city. The only way to meet these challenges is together. It takes all of us thoughtful, engaged citizens on both sides of an issue to raise their voices and concerns. You cannot have movement without friction. Thank you for coming here tonight, for engaging in our democratic process, for asking hard questions, not only to hear the answers, but so that we think more deeply about and dream bigger about how to solve them. Now, let's do more with what we have. Our agricultural lands can do more than just provide rent, they can help us build tourism, feed our population, participate in stewardship, and offer educational opportunities. Let's protect what we have. It's less expensive to buy open land and build on it, but no one tears down buildings to create more green space. As our population ages, as our birth rates fall, as we grow more aware of how much and what and why we are consuming, let's build smarter and smaller homes. Smaller makes walkable doable, it makes heating and cooling and maintaining and daily upkeep easier and less expensive. Let's continue to build community. Say hello to your neighbors. Listen to what people say, even if you disagree with them, maybe especially if you disagree with them. Ask questions, and most importantly, be kind. Let's lead by example and show the world what constructive dialogue looks like in practice. Longmont is strong not just because of our great schools or forward-thinking, our small businesses or connection to our environment, we are strong because we invest in community. Being together and valuing each other is how we get through hard times, it's how we build resiliency. Finally, let's invest in ourselves. As costs continue to rise, Longmonters can't be the only ones patronizing our businesses. We need people from near and far to come and dine here and shop here. Together, let's make Longmont the best place to live and a great place to visit.
My name is Matthew Popkin, and it's been an exhausting pleasure and privilege serving you since January on city council. I've devoted my entire career and much of my spare time to helping cities be more effective and helping them implement their goals, and helping them implement the projects that achieve the goals and bring benefits to the community. A lot of my peers up here have asked how and suggested we have to figure out how. That is my job. I do that for communities across the country. Doesn't mean I know of all the answers, I certainly don't. There are people up here with specializations in certain topics that I could only dream of, but I, but I do bring a specialization on two key topics that are really important for Longmont these days. The first is fighting climate change and preparing for a resilient future. I have helped cities invest $450 million I have helped Boulder County get $5 million for EV charging at multifamily properties. I have held you utilities accountable when they have not followed through with their promises and commitments. I have helped small towns much smaller than Longmont revitalize brownfields like the Sugar Mill that are 10 times the size of that. It's not easy, but it's the only stuff that's worth doing for me. I have protested forest clearings that were intended for new development because I respect how and where we build is so important. And I've advanced light rail transit, no joke, in Maryland, not here, but we can do that here too. You know, no one else brings the environmental credentials or energy credentials that I bring because I do this every day and I'm seeing what the market is. It's not easy, but it's really necessary. These are not promises, these are examples of things I have already done and actively work on. I don't want a sustainable future, I've dedicated my life to it. The other topic of specialization is urban renewal. You may not know this, if there's one thing I hope you remember from today, it's that our urban renewal areas, the Sugar Mill, River District, Lower Downtown, that can be a hub and support new growth in our community. But how we do that really matters. That's why three years ago I joined the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's where we understood the development process here. Two years ago I joined our brownfield advisory committee. I've been on city council and I chair our urban renewal authority in this community because that's where the money is, no joke, and those are where the tools are empowered by the state. I'm the only person in Longmont to have ever served in those four capacities. And that's because I know how important that is for making these projects happen in the right places. One of my opponents here, Teresa, said in an interview the other day that, quote, "City council can't be experts on everything, they have to be generalists." I wholeheartedly disagree. We should have specialists on some things. Each of us who are there should bring specialties to council because that's how we set policy direction, that's how we set accountability, and yes, that's how we actually do the work. So I hit the ground running in January and I'm ready to go now because in my spare time I also run ultra-marathons, so you better believe I can go the extra mile.
I know you're probably tired. This has been a pretty general debate, so I'm going to use my last three minutes to talk specifically to Ward Two residents because those are the people I am being elected by and would be primarily responsible for serving. I want to lay out a couple of key issues that are important to Ward Two specifically. We need to come together to find solutions for our airport that serves our local aviators, businesses and neighborhoods and not outside interests or flight schools. That's my stance on that one. We need to focus on coordinated growth for all life stages and the kind of housing that we need rather than what developers tell us we need in Ward Two. We get to decide what our community is going to be, us, not them. I am unequivocally and without exception and the only one up here who is against development on the Konamoto Conservation easement under any circumstances ever. Pro-development advocates will tell us in Ward Two that we are nimby's or we're selfish or we're uncaring if we don't agree with their development plans. But they're wrong. They're very wrong. That is not Longmont. Longmont is exactly the opposite of that. When I was a Boulder County attorney and I was assigned to social services, the person in the office next to me was the supervisor for foster care. And she told me at that time that there were more foster care parents in Longmont than in the rest of the county as a whole. More parents here than in the rest of the county. So don't come to Longmont and tell me that we don't care about people who are in difficult circumstances, who are struggling, because we do. We always have and we always will. And that's part of the spirit of Longmont. Now unlike Matthew, I'm not an expert in urban renewal. But I have worked with councils and legislative committees and policymakers for 25 years and I'm going to tell you from my heart that the very best ones were not a panel of experts. And there are a lot of good reasons that I don't have time to go into for why that was, but the best ones were the ones that had good judgment, critical thinking skills and a natural curiosity to seek out the information that they needed to make the best choices for the community as a whole. Not just one opinion or one expert, but multiples and all the information that they needed to pull together that information and make those good choices. I'm running for this position to bring experienced leadership that focuses on that coordinated growth and preserves the practical, innovative and yes, caring spirit of Longmont. Thank you very much.
My name is Meg and I am here for Longmont. I am here to build community regardless of whether or not I end up on city council. My goal here is to build local resistance through making those communities and through caring for our neighbors and all of our neighbors. I want a community that feels like everybody belongs. I want Longmonsters to feel like they are heard, that they are seen and they are safe. I want to continue to bring a mental health perspective and a systemically informed practice into the way that we are operating within Longmont. I want to make sure that we are still prioritizing our youth at every opportunity and I would love to see more youth involvement in Longmont City Council capacities, on the advisory boards and maybe even potentially on council itself as a youth representative. I want to make sure that we are approaching things from a scientific mindset where we are looking at data and we are making decisions based on the information that we are given and we are accumulating as many data points as we can. And I believe that we need to come together as a community to move forward. And again, just because you guys are not running for city council, you all are also Longmonsters who need to be involved. So thank you for being here and please continue this energy outside of this room and into our daily relationships with other people. Change is going to occur at the micro level in the way that we interact with each other, so please continue these conversations and as Crystal said and Regan said, be kind. Thank you.
In closing, there's a few very important points for everyone to remember. First, no level of government, be it federal, state or local, has any money of its own. Every dollar and every cent comes from the citizens by way of sales tax, property taxes or income taxes and a whole host of other fees and surcharges. In 2025, Longmont budget was $460 million. I've been told that they are currently $250 million over budget. I've been in business for 35 years and I can promise you this is not sustainable. It is great to help others that are down and need some support, but that support cannot become a lifetime of enabling. We must be sure that when we help, we also encourage the ones receiving help to help themselves. We should provide a Dave Ramsey class on how to manage money and save for the future to every person that gets government assistance. And the assistance should be for a limited number of years, not a lifetime. We should also promote a mentorship program where businesses can train an out-of-work person in plumbing, electrical, HVAC, handyman services and many more. John F. Kennedy famously said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but rather, what can you do for your country?" With that inspiration and learning from our founding fathers, I have chosen to run for Longmont City Council. Our country is a republic. As such, my goal is to be a voice for the citizens of Longmont, not be a ruler over the citizens of Longmont. And everyone that is able-bodied needs to help row the boat. We need to remember what made Longmont such a popular place to live and grow a family. It wasn't traffic, the crime, the high taxes, the lack of parking or the 10 and 14-story buildings. As a council member, I promise that no matter what decisions I vote on, I'll always let the citizens know what led to my final vote. In closing, please always shop locally. Small businesses in Longmont are the engine that allows our city to thrive. They provide tax revenue and jobs for so many of your fellow citizens. I would ask that everyone start attending city council meetings. Let your voices be heard and remember to vote in November. Thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself to you. You can find out more about me at www.stieforlongmont. Thank you.
Thank you to everybody that's here, the staff that ran this, everybody at home that's watching. Thanks to Longmont Public Media. Thanks to all these candidates. This is a very, very diverse, young group of people who are running to represent us. Thank you for being the voice that we can echo into the community. We're going to have boards and commissions that are opening up soon. Continue that. Join a board, get involved with the city. I am so passionate about this city. I moved here in 2008 when it was very grim, a lot of people were losing their houses and I was fortunate enough to set roots with Emily. This city has given so much to me, its residents has given bounties more than I can ever imagine. I thought I was going to settle in Longmont and eventually move to Boulder. I don't want to go to Boulder. This is home. This is amazing. Everybody here is truly a gift to all the residents. We also have to keep in mind that 20% of our population is Hispanic. I'm half Cuban and half Austrian. I'm an immigrant. Everybody belongs who is working hard deserves to be here. We have to protect the people around us to project us into the future. We have so much opportunity with the film festival coming here, with the BRT that's coming, with the airport ride that we will get, with 100 million visitors going to our parks. We are a compassionate city and I am proud of us because we speak up and we show up when it matters. So thank you so much for being here, it's a pleasure and an honor.
One of the things that really inspired me is I grew up outside Buffalo, New York. If you want an excellent example of a city that just didn't do it right, go to Buffalo. The wings are amazing, we have the best football team in the world. Nobody else has lost four Super Bowls in a row. But I really want us to do better because it's really a heartbreaking place to have grown up. I want to touch on a thing because not a lot of people realize this. Businesses here feel this pain, but it's hard to put your finger on. Costco pays $15,000 an acre in taxes and our local businesses like your butcher Frank and the Longmont Dairy pay $50,000. So that's a 4X tax rate. So people, the local businesses are struggling, but I don't think very many people at all understand just how backwards our tax system is. That's why I was pushing land value tax, which nobody's ever heard of and people are going to leave here and have no idea what I was talking about. I remember, I feel like if I say it enough times, people will be like, "Oh, okay, yeah." I remember what he said now. Professionally, when we talk about bringing high-paying jobs, I have built three factories in Longmont. The most recent one was to build autonomous off-road vehicles. So you want to talk about doing things that are hard, I mean, that's really hard, getting vehicles to drive around by themselves. You know, a lot of our problems are actually fairly simple, but they're not easy. Implementing ranked choice voting, put it on the ballot and people fill out their circles and we could implement it, it's like not particularly difficult. Changing the tax code, this is paperwork to change the way that we apply taxes to people. We don't have to build gigantic factories to change these and make people's lives better. There's a couple of questions that I had that I wanted to ask in the beginning, but we didn't have time, but I want you to think to yourselves, do you want a progressive tax code? And are you willing to make sacrifices now to make the world better for our children? Because I'm going to be basing my decisions, one on data, like Meg says, because I'm an engineer, and what is best for our children? That will be the number one driver of my decisions. So if you are in agreement with that, I would love if you vote for me in the fall. If you want to learn more about my positions, my website is lemkeforlongmont. And I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak with everyone tonight.